Alright, everybody. According to my clock, it is 7:00 PM. Welcome. I'd like to call the September 15th Planning Commission meeting to order. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Tuckfield, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Provenzano? Might be muted. I'll come back to Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is present. Mr. Bentley. Uh, Mr. Bentley, I think, communicated to the board he would not be here tonight. Um, and Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Uh, second call, Mr. Provenzano. He shows as being in the list of people here, Mr. Hardy, but Mr. Provenzano's, uh, not answering.
Yes, sir. He is here. I talked to him just a few moments ago. Um, I forgot to unmute.
(laughing)
Mr. Hardy told me to mute. He didn't want to hear my discussion with my wife.
(laughing) Very, very good. Mr. Chairman, uh, we have five members present. Uh, one, Mr. Uh, Mr. Bentley is excused and absent. We have a quorum, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, before we continue with, um, the next item on our agenda, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Dean Accilio. He was on the McComb Township Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals for several years, and he just recently passed away in Florida. So if we could have a moment of silence, that would be great. Okay. Let's continue. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before we continue, I'd like to make a motion if we exclude Member Bentley from any and all roll call votes. Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Do we have a second?
Second by Oliver.
Seconded by who?
Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Oliver.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. There'll be five yeses and one absent.
Okay. Um, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the September 1st, 2020 meeting. Mr. Chairman, if there's no additions, leases, or corrections, I make a motion we approve the minutes of September 1st, 2020. Second. Motion made by Mr. Shudo, seconded by Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Five yes, uh, no, no one against.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. And just to let everybody know, if you didn't get your email from Josh Fox today, there was a, a second item added, which was a temporary sign for Shar Estates. So with that correction, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
I move we approve the agenda with the, uh, uh, six B added. I think it's Shar Estates.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Oliver made the motion to approve the agenda. Seconded. Support by Member Shudo. Seconded by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Tuckfield, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Tuckfield votes yes. Uh, five yes, zero no.
Okay. Alright, new business. Final plan for Elite Corporate Park. Permanent parcel 0820100018. Located on the south side of 23 Mile Road, west of Romeo Plank, section 20. Elite Corporate Park LLC petition. Mr. Van Tiplin.
Actually, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Skirdo. He's gonna walk us through this.
Mr. Skirdo.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Hardy. I, let me walk through the development and give you an overview of it. Um, the development is on the south side of 23 Mile Road. It is, uh, wraps around two sides of a existing business named the Foam Factory, which fronts 23. Uh, this, this is a, a site condominium development for a industrial park. It consists of seven lots. We have two smaller lots, maybe 23 Mile Road. We have three moderate-sized lots, uh, along the, would be the west property line, and the two very large lots in the rear of the property. There will be a excess road coming in from 23 Mile Road. It will turn into a T at the midpoint of the property. As you turn to the east, that T becomes a cul-de-sac accessing, uh, site number seven. Then it, uh, the other side of the T actually connects up to Enterprise Drive, uh, which is adjacent to the west. Um, this tree will have three stubs on it. All three stubs will, uh, go to the property line adjacent to the Foam Factory. The two stubs nearest the north end, adjacent to the building, will connect up the pavement at the Foam Factory. Uh, the third stub, uh, will go to an area near a rear parking lot, but it doesn't physically attach to the parking lot. There will be about a 10-foot, uh, unpaved area between the stub and that parking lot. Um, all departments have reviewed the plan. We all find from a technical standpoint, other than a couple of housekeeping items, uh, we find no issues with it. The fire department does have verbally mentioned that they are, they have a slight concern about not connecting that stub to the furthest of the south in that rear parking lot at this time, but there's no technical issues that they can point to. Um, any decision made tonight will be a recommendation to the township board. And I, um, good to conclude that and open myself up to any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skirdo. Is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, Tom Kalas is here for the petitioner, Elite Corporate Park LLC.
Okay. Tom, can you please state your name and address for us, please?
Sure. Tom Kalas. That's K-A-L-A-S. Business address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, Bingham Farms, Michigan, 48025. Mr. Hardy also here this evening is the petitioner, Dominic Garrick, owner of Elite Corporate Park. Our engineer, Jeff Rizzo, from Fenn, and Dan Spatafora is also here with us, a representative of Elite Corporate Park. Um, so we are here to answer any questions you may have. Uh, we are seeking, uh, site plan approval, uh, from the Planning Commission for the road configuration and lot layout that has been presented. This is pursuant to a consent judgment that was entered with the court on October 16, 2017, uh, providing for the road configuration, lot layout, and potential uses at the time. I do want to, uh, bring to the Planning Commission's attention that we have amended this consent judgment recently with a court order for Site 3. It was previously intended for hotel or motel use, both local and national users. But obviously, with the COVID pandemic, the hotel industry's been decimated. Uh, we do have a user for that site, however, which is good news for everyone. It's a safe store, uh, facility, which is an enclosed self-storage facility. They are a national user, and they are ready to go. I believe they've even submitted their site plan a couple of days ago to the township, which the township is holding until we can get this, uh, overall site plan approval for the entire project, uh, uh, by the township. So, um, we've complied with all the requirements, um, of the ordinance, of the consent judgment. Uh, we are here seeking the Planning Commission, uh, recommendation for approval so that we can proceed. Uh, we don't want to, uh, delay this project any longer. Uh, I believe we did secure engineering approval last year. A site bond, uh, was also provided for the development costs, which were reviewed and approved by your, uh, engineering consultant, AEW. Uh, so for all intents and purposes, other than a couple of housekeeping issues, which Mr. Skirdo mentioned, uh, we're ready to proceed. We're excited. We have users, like, an existing user. We have potential users. And we'd like to get the development and construction in this season, so we're not delayed, uh, and have to wait until next season. Uh, so with that being said, again, we're here to answer any questions, and I would kindly request, uh, an approval tonight so that we can proceed with the, uh, project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Skirdo, can you please share with our, our community, with our citizens, what the housekeeping issues are?
Okay. One of the housekeeping issues is the landscape plan. The physical drawing of the landscape and the counting of the trees and plant materials on that plan do not match the landscape schedule. They have to corroborate the two numbers. Um, other than that, I think that's the only housekeeping item we had. I'm going through the reviews right now. I double-checked. I don't see anything. Everybody else recommended approval, assessor, fire. So, yes, that was the, that was the, um, that was the issue. And then...
Yeah. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for the user, the petitioner, or Mr. Skirdo?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
I had a couple of questions. I think I, I'm gonna start with, uh, Mr. Skirdo. Uh, Dave, uh, you mentioned the, the landscape plan, um, a, a general question and then a specific one. A general question was, I didn't really see any reference to the landscape plan in here. Is it, is it missing, or is it, are we not, do we not have it in our packet? Or, or is, am I not looking in the right place for it?
I am not sure if you got it in your packet. We had a preliminary landscape plan that came in months ago when we put these comments out. I don't believe we ever received a revised plan yet.
Okay. And then, uh, maybe a little more specific plan. So, uh, I haven't seen too many of these in my time here, 'cause we haven't really had, uh, most of the industrial subs were, were set by the time I, I came on the Planning Commission. I'm, I'm used to looking at sub orientations with, um, uh, through the residential process, when either we're doing a site condo or, or a, uh, I guess, a true subdivision, if you will, true residential subdivision. Um, how does this compare to that process? Um, and, and along with that, a couple of sub questions. Um, the landscaping, would it be only with regards to the front entrance? Or would it be with regards to buffering against the neighboring uses? And, and how does the, how does the, i- if, if you are familiar with it, I know, obviously, you've been, you haven't been with the township for a long time, but I assume this, this is similar to other municipalities. How does the, um, industrial sub approval process, um, in, in context to something I maybe I'm a little more familiar with it, how does it, how does it run concurrent with a sub, with a residential subdivision?
Well, it's, 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 it's very similar. Basically, you're subdividing it, land. One just has bigger lots for industrial development. The other one has smaller lots for homes. And the issues, uh, right now, in terms of plant count, um, are really gonna be confined toward that front easement, along the frontage for landscaping. And then, um, we've already gone through the buffering and stuff back, and everything will be met. But as, as new development comes in, it will be back in front of us. Anytime a lot is developed, they will have to come in for a site plan. We are, uh, just approving the street, uh, and the, um, the street, the lot layout, and the frontage on 23 Mile.
Okay.
The landscape requirements as, uh, development proceeds.
Okay. So then, then a couple of other, a couple of other questions as well. And I'm, I maybe I'm not doing these in the right order. My apologies. But, um, th- this is coming before us as a, as a final plan. I assume this has something to do with the fact that this went through consent judgment, although I guess I'm a little puzzled on the consent judgment. Obviously, the Planning Commission isn't necessarily directly, uh, involved with that. But the last time I believe this applicant was in front of us, uh, they were looking at a, a, um, a mixed commercial, um, type usage. I believe it had a dome, et cetera, and, and to the public reports where I read in the newspaper, there was a lawsuit filed after the Planning Commission, I don't remember the exact, uh, procedure for how this went down. But after we saw it last time, there was, there was a lawsuit filed, and I assume this consent judgment is the, um, is the result of that lawsuit. But I guess where I, I am puzzled is if you could let us know sort of what the consent judgment had covered, since it wasn't an issue of taking it to a different zoning, and then maybe more of the specifics on how that's interacting with our process. Obviously, we have a final plan here. We don't have a preliminary plan, which, if we are mirroring the subdivision, um, that I'm, I'm used to, would be something. And, 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 and what we're able to do in this final plan, or not able to do because of the consent judgment. And just as, as one, one instance, if I was looking at this as a preliminary plan with a subdivision, one of my comments would, would be with regards to where this, this, uh, retention or the detention basin, and I'm, and I'm not sure which it is in this case, um, where it is on the property. And this is a similar concern, and I know you weren't here, but this is a similar concern that I had, um, when they came forth with the last item. And that was that it seemed to make more sense to put some of these items, uh, and, and features to the back half of the property. It's a better buffer between the heavy industrial, or in the last case, the, the sport usage and, and the residential. So I'm not sure if that's a, if that's a proper question or something that can be done at this time, or if because of the combination with the consent judgment of comments such as that are, are, are out of line or not, not reasonable at this point.
Mr. Tuckfield, uh, Mr. Van Tiplin, I'll, I'll, I'll take that. The consent judgment did address a lot of what you, um, have just outlined. Um, the lots that are, are labeled as one and two that front on 23 Mile Road, for example, wouldn't normally be something that would be approved. There'd be a landscape area that would, um, uh, be between those lots and, uh, 23 Mile Road. Um, so that those lots would have to turn and, and be, um, uh, fronted on the...
Right on the side street. Yeah.
Yeah. So the landscaping plan that Dave is referring to, um, doesn't really show a lot because there will be approaches off of 23 Mile Road to those, to those units. But, again, those are the types of things that were covered in the consent judgment that would allow commercial in, in the front, in those lots up front on that, on that road, uh, 23 Mile Road. So there, as far as procedure goes, there was a, uh, concept plan that was approved as part of the consent judgment, um, that, that is basically the same configuration that you see before you. And the consent also said that, that also covers the preliminary plan portion of the process for a site condominium. It also gave the developers some flexibility as to what they could do, um, as far as site condominium or simple splits. Um, they've, uh, decided to proceed with, with a site condominium here. I think it also had some provisions in it with regard to a hotel being put on, on Unit 3, and I think Mr. Kalas referred to that.
Spoke to that. Yeah.
Earlier. So, they, you know, the, the detention basin location, that was, that was part of the, the concept, uh, sketch. The, the large lots in the back and, and the smaller lots as you approach 23 Mile Road were all part of, part of the consent judgment.
So, so because it was in the preliminary plan, because it was the general flow of the layout, and because that was included in the consent judgment, is it accurate to say that we don't have any say in it, in that? Or, or any comments or ability to comment on it?
Well, I, I think you can, you can discuss things that, you know, you could, might be minor tweaks to it. But anything that we would do, I, I think would have to be, um, agreed to, um, with the petitioner.
Okay. Well, I've...
Have the same flexibility that we would in a normal...
In a normal, okay. And that's, and that's what I assumed. I just wanted to make sure that I was, that I was a- accurate in it. And I, I would have comments on, on two things. One, I've already touched on, and that's the retention basin. Um, I, my concern whenever we have these buffered, these, these uses buffered against each other, uh, is that they're given adequate space. And I guess I would have liked to have seen the retention basin apply to buffer, uh, an industrial to a residential use as opposed to an industrial to a commercial use. So maybe there's, maybe there's a technical reason that it's in the middle of the property. Maybe it's easier to drain to that, or something of that nature. But, um, I, I feel like it might have, it might have been a be- better buffer in, in the rear yard. Um, the other comment that I would have, and again, I don't know if this is something that is a comment only or, or is something that can be taken at more, but if I remember correctly, there is an easement along one of these property lines. I believe it's along the south property line. Um, and my concern would be how we handle, uh, once, once we get to the build-outs of the buildings on these parcels. Um, again, I assume this is, this is more like what I've seen with the other industrial subs, um, that are already existing. That's when they'll put the walls in. Um, I'm concerned that, that at that point, we may end up seeing, uh, requests for variance, um, to not be able, you know, to not put a wall in because of the easement back there, to put it off the property line, or to have some other, other, um, other condition that will help them do that. And so I'm, I'm looking just to make sure that people are aware of that on the front end, and, and we work around it as opposed to going to build and realize it's not doable and, and have to sort of fix things at the point of, of building the building. So those are my two concerns, the, uh, the retention basin, and then the wall, and the, the division to the, to the residential, uh, to the south. And, uh, yeah, I think that's everything I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anybody else?
Mr. Hardy.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
I have a question to the petitioner. My question is, there used to be a rear drive that, that made a really nice drive around, and it was, it was very safe. And it appears that that's not in there now. Is there any reason why that was taken out? And is, is there any been any attempt to, uh, try to put it back in?
Uh, Dominic, go ahead. Uh, this is Dominic Garrick of the petitioner.
Yep.
Um, the drive in the rear parking lot is basically sitting underneath the new pond that is there. Uh, we have offered to the current landowner, the Foam Factory, to replace the drive and make the connection to the other drive, and we have not gotten permission to replace it. So that offer stands, uh, and if they want us to replace the drive, we're more than willing to do that.
Oh, you, you made an official offer, and you got some documentation of that, so... Because here's my concern. If, if the Foam Factory needs to do anything in the future, I got a feeling that the, uh, site plan is gonna have to be revisited, and the township ordinance has been required that there's a rear drive. And looking down the road, I, I don't wanna see that the Foam Factory comes to us and says that we didn't make you put it in. So if, if you've officially have proof that you've tried to work with them, and they've said no, uh, that's what I need to know, uh, because then when, i- if they come in, they may never come in, but if they do, then we'd have something to say, "Look, you guys were offered this drive, but you turned it down." That's my...
Yeah, uh, Tom Kalas, um, for petitioner. Uh, that is correct. I personally dealt with their attorney. We were in express terms denied all and any access to their property for any type of improvement whatsoever. Uh, so that's unfortunately their position, and we're proceeding accordingly with our site plan.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Hardy. Uh, i- if you could, um, Mr. Kalas, I was not able to hear that last, uh, the last couple of sentences. I, I don't know if it was on mine or yours.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I dealt, uh, specifically with the Foam Factory's attorney relative to the improvements we had proposed for their site, and they expressly denied us any type of access to their property whatsoever. And they prohibited us making any type of improvement on their property whatsoever.
And, and you were there to off, you've offered that, correct?
We have. Yes, yes, we have. And, and, uh, in fact, we, uh, we've been offered, um, the, uh, on the stormwater easement, uh, and some other, uh, improvements that my client was willing to do at its cost, and those were all denied, so...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hardy, I got one, one last question.
Absolutely, Mr. Oliver.
Is, is anyone from the Foam Factory online tonight, or representing the Foam Factory?
Daniel? Do we have anybody representing Foam Factory? You probably wouldn't know that, right?
I do not know offhand. If there's anyone in the public representing, feel free to virtually raise your hand.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, anyone else have a comment?
Mr. Mr. Hardy, I did have one follow-up question on that to, to Mr. Kalas. Um, uh...
Go ahead.
Well, I guess, actually, two questions. One, is that, is that communication, that, the, the, the communication written to Mr. Oliver's point and something that can be shared with the township would be the first question? Uh, and the second question is, is there, was there any reason that was given for this? It seems a little strange that, um, that out of hand, uh, the ability to ma- keep a lot conforming and having an attachment to that parking lot in the rear, which they seem to be using, would be, um, would be denied out of hand. Was, was there a reason given why they didn't really want that help with their property?
Um, I do have an email from the attorney. Uh, I don't believe it can be shared, um, going on the record indicating that it does exist, and that we were expressly denied all access and all improvements. That's all I can say at this time.
Look, Ken, we're really having a hard time hearing you, Tom.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm connected to my laptop. I, I do have an email from their attorney. I don't believe I can share it with the township, but I, I will go on record indicating that a email was received by me, uh, where they specifically denied all access to the Foam Factory property and the ability to make any improvements to their property. Um, so we obviously, you know, have to be concerned with our property. All we can control is what happens on our site, um, and we have to move forward at this point, so...
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, just one more, one, one additional follow-up question. I think this would be to Mr. Assorti. Uh, Tom, just a question on this. I don't know if you're familiar with the existing site plan, but, uh, the, the existing, um, uh, property that the elite, uh, uh, representatives here are referring to currently has a drive that's connected to this, to this parking lot. Um, and that drive would be removed as part of their improvements. Are, are we causing ourselves a problem by recommending, I suppose it's already part of the, the, the consent judgment, but are we causing ourselves a problem by recommending improvements that are going to cause a, uh, non-conforming, uh, potentially a non-conforming lot on the rear portion of the, the Foam Factory property?
Well, I don't believe it's gonna create a non-conforming lot, 'cause it has, it's part of the consent judgment.
Is the Foam Factory lot, uh, uh, part of the consent judgment?
The, the Foam Factory lot is not part of the consent judgment.
Right. And that would end, that would be what would end up being non-conforming, I assume.
I'm, I'm, I apologize. I'm not following your question.
Yeah. Nothing we are doing, nothing we are doing is making the Foam Factory non-conforming.
So, so, Mr. Mr. Assorti, in the rear portion of the Foam Factory property, they have a parking lot. And currently, it is attached to a road that is not on their parcel. If the improvements that are presented here are, are completed, that road would be disconnected from the parking lot in the rear portion of the Foam Factory property. I don't know if it's a portion of the ordinance, um, that it specifically requires it be connected, but it sounds like there's been some concern, minor or otherwise, from the fire, uh, fire department. So, yeah, the, the, the parcel in question would be fine. It would have its access roads. But by removing the road that's on it, it could potentially be causing a proper, a, a problem with the property next door. And I'm, I just wanna make sure that we're not, we're not potentially causing ourselves a problem by potentially creating a problem for Foam Factory by approving this, uh, site plan or, or subdivision plan.
Mr. Kalas can weigh in, but I don't believe the Foam Factory has access to that, to that property.
It's, it's correct. That, it's on our parcel of property, so we have, you know, and the consent judgment has approved the lot layout and configuration. And again, we had offered to connect or provide a connecting drive to their asphalt parking lot, which they denied, or refused, I should say. So there's... So there still is access to their parking lot on their site, um, but again, the existing drive...
With all due, with all, with all due respect, Mr. Callis, though, right now, that, that drive is on your parcel and their parking lot is connected, so...
Yes.
By removing it, you are removing access to it. I understand what you're saying, that the Foam Factory, uh, owners are not wanting additional. But if, if they're not wanting additional, that means you want to put concrete in, in a different place than what you're removing. Otherwise, you wouldn't have to go on their property. I mean, if, if, if you just put back what was there, it would be connected and you wouldn't have to touch their property and there would be connection. It's, it's being caused by the fact that we're putting in something new and you're having to go from a different angle. I assume from the service drive, uh, to the west would be the idea, and I believe there's that, that gap there. And, 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 please don't misunderstand me, I'm not trying to necessarily say you're causing a problem. I wanna make sure that we're not causing ourselves a problem by approving something that's gonna give us a problem with the parcel next door in the future.
Uh, Dominic Garrick, petitioner, can I answer that question from Mr. Tuckfield? Um, the drive is, in the back, is being removed. But if you look at, on the executive drive, the fourth drive back, there's a connection to that parking lot that's there. So we're connecting right to that parking lot. Now, there will be a little sliver, which we told them we will put in the ten feet of concrete. We've offered it up, for some reason, they don't wanna give us the permission. But that, as long as they put that ten feet in, they have access to that parking lot from executive drive. Um, and we've offered to put the road back in on the other side. And we've offered to put the water main connection, which you see up in red, uh, that the township would like. Uh, so we've done, we've gone well beyond, um, the norm. There is a restriction and covenant between these two properties, uh, that says that we will not block access. There's a road that's there now and utilities, and we haven't. For twenty-some years, this property was split, we have not blocked it. The seven years that I've owned it, we've never blocked it. And we have no intention to block it. So I don't know what else we can do. Uh, we've offered to put everything back the way it was, um, and we put, even, even if we don't put the other street in on the east side, we're giving them connection right to our property line and right to executive drive.
And, and Mr. Garrick, I, I appreciate the comments. Um, and, and again, as I, as I mentioned to Mr. Callis, I'm, I'm not insinuating here that you are attempting to make your neighbor's lot nonusable. Um, but on the same hand, recognize that while you are providing it, you, you are, you are removing, whether it, it's, it's combined or not, you're removing the current access to it. And that's, that's my concern, that, that the township is not giving themselves a problem. It sounds like, though, Tom, and, 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 just give me a yea or nay, are we, are we okay doing this?
We are replacing the access on the south end. If you see that drive, that goes right into their parking lot.
Tom, and I'm sorry, Tom.
Go ahead, Mr. Assorti.
This is Tom Assorti. The answer is yes.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wanted to make sure of. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Assorti.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Um, any other commissioners have questions? Mr. Skurdo, I'm still, and, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, and I understand the housekeeping issues, but towards the fact of the property, they, uh, Elite, it butts up to two, looks like two subdivisions. What kind of landscaping are we gonna put in there to make sure that our community is, um, taken care of?
Well, if the right town is only approving a lot layout and a street layout, a decent landscaping plan is not required for back areas.
Okay, so...
Now, they will be, when a building gets built there and we're faced with natural development, all restrictions of buffering, screening, landscaping, et cetera, will come into play at that point.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make clear to my fellow commissioners in the community that's out there listening. All right, thank you, sir. All right, if there's nothing else from commissioners, I'd like to open this up to the public. Daniel, is there anyone that would like to speak? Dan, are you there?
Sorry, um, there is one. Uh, as a reminder, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and virtually raise your hand. If you're on the phone, dial star nine, um...
And as you put, put them forward, please make sure that, uh, we state our name and address, please.
Cliff, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Cliff, are you there? Cliff, are you there? Dan, is he still there, do you think, or no?
Um, he did unmute for a second or two, looks like he's raising his hand and putting it back down again. So it looks like they're actually there. I don't know if they can communicate, though.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else besides, uh, Cliff that would like to speak tonight? Daniel, have you got anybody raising their hand, virtually?
Um, the only person I see is Cliff again.
Okay. Can we try one more time with, uh, Cliff?
Yep, I've, I've given them permission to talk.
I'm hearing somebody. Cliff, can you hear us at all, or no? Well, I think we've given Cliff some ample time to, uh, unmute his mic and speak if he'd like. Um, as we move on to the next item, uh, Cliff, if you would like, you can make your comments on, in the chat room. If you wanna do that, and then I will share those with the fellow commissioners. Um, at this time, I'd like to close the public portion of this item. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of this item at seven thirty-seven AM?
Motion to close the public portion?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, do I have a second?
Support, member Shudo.
Supported by a member Shudo. Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Five, four, uh, zero against.
Okay, good.
Hey, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Van Tiplin, can we remove this from our screen, please?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next item is a temporary...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that was just closing the public portion.
We gotta vote on this.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have a motion for, uh, permanent parcel zero eight two zero one zero 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 one eight? Everybody like to take a motion?
Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Oliver?
Did, did, has somebody made a motion yet?
No, I, I was, I was hoping you would.
Okay, I will. All right, thank you, Mr. Hardy, um...
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, move to, uh, approve the final plan for Elite Corporate Park, permanent parcel oh eight two zero one zero zero oh one eight, located on south side of twenty-three mile road, West Romeo Plain, section twenty.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Oliver, do I have a second?
I would like to support that motion.
Mr. Provenzano was supporting that motion. Mr. Tuckfield, hold the roll.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, brief discussion on this. Uh, the individual who, uh, who was trying to raise their hand, um, uh, earlier, uh, texted, uh, me in a roundabout way. And, uh, they were hoping to be able to possibly speak. They're, they are having problems unmuting themselves. I'm wondering, I might be able to do a, uh, a speakerphone from my cellphone to, to the, to the microphone. Should we attempt to do that, or, uh, should we make any other attempt to try to connect them, uh, prior to us taking a vote?
You know what, I would really like our community to have their say. So if you can do that, please, by all means, go ahead.
All right, give me just a moment here.
I think that sounds right.
I looked in the chat room and there was nothing there, so... Mr. Tuckfield, how you doing?
Just a second, Mr. Hardy.
Okay.
I have him on the phone, Mr. Hardy, just a moment.
Okay, great.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I, I have, um, Mr. Barra on the phone here, and he's on speakerphone. And, um, uh, we're gonna try to relay this through, and I'm gonna have him, uh, go ahead and give his comments. He did have some comments and questions. I indicated to him that we do have a motion on the floor, and it's a little bit unusual, but we're just trying to make sure that we, uh, we help the public, uh, make the comments if they want to and, and make our way around some of these technical issues that we might have.
Okay, make sure you state the name and address, please.
Very good, and Mr. Barra, I, I think you might be able to hear me. Uh, go ahead and state your name and address for the record and, uh, give the comments that you had, uh, that you're trying to give elsewhere.
Absolutely, my name is Cliff Barra, B-A-R-A. Address is one seven four six three Rocco Drive, four A zero four four.
Very good, Mr. Hardy, is that coming through okay?
Uh, barely, but I, I got him, he's on Roscoe Drive, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Rocco, yeah, R-O-C-C-O.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Barra.
And, and I appreciate, I'm sorry for the inconvenience of the phone, I just couldn't get things unmuted. Um, but, you know, I'm just, uh, speaking for some of, several of the neighbors here who are along the south, um, south property line. And, um, there were some comments made about, um, you know, the, um, the retention pond being moved back and, you know, whether that's a potential or not. But some of our other concerns are, like, setbacks, and maybe it's not the right time and the right forum, but setbacks as far as, uh, you know, what, what are we gonna do with this easement that we have behind our houses? It's a shared easement, it comes onto my property as well as the, uh, the petitioner's property. And, um, I know in the past, we've not been able to do anything on the easement as far as putting, even so much as a simple fence on, um, to that easement. So I'm just, I, I'm concerned with that. And may, like I said, maybe that will come out when the site plans are being developed. But, so there's, there's concerns about that, there's concerns about lighting in general. Um, if you, you know, with, with a, with a two and a half story building, fifty, you know, fifty or seventy-five hundred feet away from the slot line, uh, up against a residential zone, uh, how are we gonna shield lighting? I mean, you have to have lighting, I understand, but, um, you know, how are we gonna shield the, the residential neighborhood from all that lighting and all that other stuff? Um, there's nothing in the plans that I've seen or, or what's being proposed, and it may only be roads, but there's nothing in there that's talking about, um, you know, green belts or walls and all of the other provisions that, and maybe, like I said, maybe they come later, I don't know. But we're concerned about that from that, from a residential standpoint, so...
Very good, Mr. Barra, was that, uh, and, and we'll see if we can get some, uh, of those questions answered, but just because of the way this is working, was that all of your questions that you had? Or do you have any, uh, additional questions or comments?
I do believe, you know, between that, the, uh, you know, just between the green space and the wall and, and some of the others, zoning ordinances, the, um, you know, just the obviously protective ordinances, no, that, that's pretty much the gist of my questions.
Okay, very good. I, I, I'm gonna, unless, Mr. Hardy, was all of that, uh, uh, recognizable for the record? Could you hear what was said?
You know, I did, I heard everything.
Okay, very good, so...
And, um, I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Skurdo, Mr. Skurdo?
And I thank you guys for, for your understanding.
Very good, if, if you could, sir, I'm gonna hang it up so we don't have, uh, uh, circles through, and Mr. Skurdo will answer the, the, the comments, uh, through our normal channels here, if that's, if that's all good with you.
Yep.
All right, very good, thank you, sir.
Mr. Skurdo, I think you addressed that as far as my question, but could you please again?
Yeah, can you hear me, Mr. Hardy?
I can, sir, yes.
Yes, Mr. Skurdo, again, your planning consultant. Uh, all the questions Mr. Barra brought up are very good. We take all those questions very seriously at the time the development is presented to us. But those questions are premature at this point, but they will be taken. And there are ordinances that will be enforced as part of the site plan review and whether at time when a building or is, uh, constructed or brought in front of us to be constructed.
Okay. And I know this is a little out of the ordinary, but in the chat room, Mary Ann basically has said, "Where is Highland Hills condos on the map?" And...
Uh, we understand to the east.
Okay. All right, I think we've answered everybody. Uh, Ms. Ms. Rocco stated her concerns were the same as Cliff's, so we're good with that. Um, Mr. Oliver, do you still wanna make the motion?
Yes, my motion still stands.
Okay, and I believe it was Mr. Provenzano that supported it? Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Chairman, that passed five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for indulging me, uh, getting the resident on the line. I know it's, uh, out of our typical order.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
With Zoom and everything, you almost have to make the combination.
Yep.
Next item is a temporary sign for Charis State, located on the south side of twenty-four mile road, west of Carr, section sixteen. Permanent parcel zero eight one six one zero 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 one five. Mr. Van Tiplin or Mr. Skurdo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hardy. Uh, Charis State is in front of us tonight to install a temporary sign advertising homes for sale. Um, all departments that was, uh, uh, received plans, looked at the dimensions, and, uh, we have no objections from any department.
Okay, is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes, Lisa Shackleton.
Okay, do you have any, Mrs. Sha- Ms. Shackleton, will you please take your name and address, please, for the record?
Lisa Shackleton, zero nine three zero five Marseille, McComb, Michigan, four A zero four four.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to share with the planning commission?
I do not.
Okay, commissioners, we'll bring it to you. Commissioners, do you have anything? Mr. Skurdo, do we need to do a public portion for this, or no?
No.
That was no?
No, Mr. Hardy.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, do we have a motion for the temporary sign for Charis State's?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Oliver.
I move that we give the Charis Estates a temporary sign, and, uh, wait one year, or do we give a time on that?
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Oliver?
Per the ord- per the ordinance, thank you.
I, I would support that, but I just wanna clarify, there was some, uh, there was some sound distortion. Was that motion for a period of one year, or what was, can...
Uh, it's, it's a year. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, they think it's a year, but I'm gonna leave it at per the, per the ordinance.
Okay, very good, I'll support that.
Mr. Oliver made the motion, Mr. Tuckfield supported it. Mr. Tuckfield, call the roll, please.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
It'd be five, zero in, uh, for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item on our list is old business. Mr. Skurdo or Mr. Van Tiplin, do you have any old business for us?
Oh, Mr. Hardy, it's old business at the time.
Okay, sir, thank you. Um, now we move to the public co- public comments on non-agenda items. Daniel, is there anyone that would like to speak?
If there is anyone who'd like to speak.
This is on non-agenda items.
Virtually raise your hand, if you are calling in, dial star nine. I do not see anyone.
Okay, sir, thank you. At this time, we'll close that portion of the, uh, the meeting, and we'll move to commissioners' comments. Commissioners, anybody have anything they'd like to share tonight?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuck.
Just a brief comment with regards to the, uh, to the site, uh, or the condominium, uh, final, uh, not the condominium, the industrial subdivision final plan. I'm gonna get my, uh, my terms right here. Just a quick comment on that, I, I do have some, I had some, um, uh, reservations, I voiced some of them. Um, if it had been a typical, um, a typical layout, I think I would've wanted to push those a little bit further. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with a couple of things there, uh, but I just wanted to, to note for the record that, uh, principally, the reason that I, I voted in affirmative is that it looks like in, in most of these situations, we're governed by the consent judgments, um, or it's not the appropriate time to bring up those concerns. So just wanted to, to note that, uh, for the record, uh, on that particular item, and that was all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner Provenzano.
Go ahead, Mr. Provenzano.
So, Josh, I tried to do the survey, and I kept getting stuck. I, I mean, I tried to go to the next, and I kept pushing, it says three, pick three options, I picked three options, and I kept pushing it, and it wouldn't let me participate because it kept saying that I didn't push three options. Have a lot of people done the survey? I mean, is, is everybody getting through, and it's just me? Because I don't, you know...
Mr. Skurdo, if you don't mind, Mr....
Or Mr. Skurdo, sorry.
I'm in the process of ta- ta- testing, and what question would you be stuck on? Because we've got, we're running through it again this week. Uh, so far, we've had a couple minor issues, but we haven't had too much. Everybody's been getting through it fairly well. But what question was that, and why don't we, we're gonna retest everything?
Yeah, it was, uh, what you do not like about McComb.
Okay.
Township, and I was trying to, you know, I, I really only had one thing. It wanted me to pick three, and I just didn't wanna do it. Then there was another one that said, "What you like about McComb", and I had three, and I kept pushing it, and it kept going back. I'd hit the arrow, and it would go back and say, "You gotta pick three", and I'm like, I did pick three. And when I would push it, it would, like, subtract one of my options.
Okay.
So I don't know, maybe it's just me, I, I, I don't know, but I was just wondering if there was anybody else that had any...
Everything. So, thank you, I got those going down.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Shudo, I don't think I got a copy of that survey that was sent to us.
Okay, well, I got it in the email.
Yeah, I didn't get it through the email, so I'm just wondering if it was sent while commissioners are randomly selected.
Uh, Mr. Shudo, I'll speak with Mr. Box tomorrow, see where everything went to, and we'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to make any comments tonight? Commissioners?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick comment about the past Commissioner Osilio. Great guy, involved in our community, he was, uh, I think the president of McComb Mustangs, our football program, for years. He sat, uh, on the end, which I sit now, and I'm, I'm proud to replace him. He also helped, uh, one of our older members, Joe Penzine, he drove to and from the meetings. I learned a lot from Dean, I talked to him about two or three weeks ago, we had a conversation about, uh, the township, and he's in Florida now, or he, and he said, "If there is a community, if you move back to Michigan, it'll be McComb". So God may he rest in peace, and, uh, Dean, you'll truly be missed.
Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Mr. Provenzano?
Yeah, I, uh, two things, uh, one is, uh, I, uh, also wanted to say that, uh, I'll dearly miss Dean. I sat with him when I was on the planning commission, he taught me a lot of things. He was an attorney, I was an attorney, we had a number of times when we met against one another. He was a feisty guy, and, um, I knew his brother Scott as well, and, uh, I, I, I will miss him, too. He was really, like Jasper said, just a terrific guy, and he was really enjoying himself, you know, being located down in Florida, and still working the law, and doing things, and it was just, uh, sorrow to hear that, 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 that he passed like that. So, I, 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 I echo your sentiments, uh, Jasper.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano, and I'll echo both of your sentiments, but I didn't know him as the planning commissioner or on the ZBA. I was the McComb Mustangs', uh, medic, and I worked with him for probably five, ten years on, uh, on the youth football league, and I agree with both of you, he was a class act, he was a good guy. Uh, the other item I'd like to add is, for Mr. Skurdo and Mr. Box, my compliments to you, the survey, other than a glitch here and there that I know you're working out, and your plan to bring it forward to the public, seems like it's on the right track, and that you're doing a great job. And I noticed also that Mr. Tuckfield had, uh, put a post out there, um, for anyone that was interested, because that was what you asked us to do, because we wanna get more and more community feedback, so I'd like to also compliment Mr. Tuckfield, he put a Facebook post out, that I think received a lot of responses. So, I think we're on the right track with the master plan, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Com- uh, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, Mr. Provenzano. I, I received a couple of letters, one from me, one from my wife, regarding the master, uh, I believe, they wanted their input, and I remember talking to commissioners one time about, you know, if we could send out an email blast or something, and somebody told me, oh, they sent the procedure. I'm really glad that those letters went out, and, uh, I, too, uh, echo your sentiment that the people are gonna get involved in this, they, they, they have an opportunity, so that was good, I liked that.
Yeah, I, I'm very happy that this master plan will have lots and lots of community input.
It should.
Yep, and it should, absolutely.
And it's obvious, Commissioner Tuckfield here, it's obvious that Mr. Skurdo and, and Mr. Box, uh, have been working hard on that. I'd echo your sentiments, I, I really like, really like what I'm seeing with it so far, it's encouraging.
Good job, guys, and, uh, Mr. Skurdo, I'm sure you'll relay that to Mr. Box tomorrow.
And Mr. Van Tiplin, too.
Oh, and Mr. Van Tiplin, too, gee, I wasn't even, my, my apologies, sir. Give me two. All right, let's move on. Mr. Oliver, McComb Township Board and Trustee's liaison update, do you have anything for us, sir?
Yes, I do. Uh, uh, on September the twenty-fourth, firefighter Joe Warren will again depart from Fire Station Two for his walk to Grand Rapids. That is a hundred and forty mile walk. He will be in full firefighter gear to raise funds and awareness for firefighters battling cancer. This year, there is three retired McComb Township firefighters that will be recipients of the money he raised. I would love and like everyone to consider donating to the nonprofit organization called Neighborhood Uni- Neighborhoods United, and they're on Facebook. Uh, just so everyone knows, that gear is ninety pounds that he's wearing, and, uh, if anyone could be proud of a person that took something upon himself like that, it's, it's myself, and, and, uh, I, I think that's great, and it really shows the world what McComb Township's all about. So, um, kudos for you, Mr. Warren, and, uh, uh, good luck, and I hope I'm there, on your takeoff on the twenty-fourth, and that's all.
Mr. Oliver, do you know what time, uh, firefighter Warren's taking off?
Uh, I think he's leaving at ten, but, uh, I can give you that information.
That would be great. Okay, anything else, sir?
Uh, no, but if, I might have that right here. Hold on, I'm sorry, at seven thirty-eight...
Oliver, you take your time, sir. I'm assuming the firefighter Warren will also be wearing his SCBA, his, uh, tank and everything?
I'm, that's his gear.
Yeah.
Whatever his standard gear is, and, uh, uh, I, I think that's just something really great, and I think, uh, uh, McComb Township, uh, needs to be really behind it. But he will be departing at, uh, seven thirty AM.
Seven thirty, okay. All righty, anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
All right, ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield, it's your turn.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report from the ZBA.
Okay, sir, thank you. Uh, planning department, do you have any items for us tonight?
Uh, no, we're already, we're about to see everybody on the master plan, and we've already covered that.
Okay, all right, good job. Well, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So who?
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by...
Supported by Tuckfield.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield, and Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hardy, pardon me, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Be five, four, zero against, Mr. Chairman.
All right, everybody have a good night, the meeting is now adjourned at eight oh three.